Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting in the Harrisville Board of Alderman to order if you will stand and recite a pledge with us this.
Pledgeions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Milner is excused and mayor of Alderman.
Present, thank you. We have a forum. We do have a ceremonial matter tonight. It's the same proclamation that we offered a year ago to the Happy Bottoms diaper proclamation. And Reese, whereas diaper need, the provision of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that one in three families struggle with diaper need, and forty-eight percent of families spare and change their diaper to extend their supply, and whereas children over sixty-two thousand days play during the two-year-old formula. And whereas purchasing adult diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume fourteen percent of a little bit of change's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And whereas a daily hourly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in child care programs and quality education programs. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending court or school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the people of Harrisonville recognize that diaper need is a public health issue and addressing diaper need can lead to economic challenges for the city's families and communities and food help for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas while experiencing double, triple, or quadruple increases in demand of diapers due to pandemic and economy shutdown, Happy Bottoms is here to give them their ability to increase diapers to be used and support children and families in the community assistance. Now therefore, I, J. Goldman, Mayor Harrisonville, do give my complaint the week of September twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, 2020, as diaper need is very misleading. In Harrisonville, I encourage the citizens of Harrisonville to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to those struggling with diaper need, so that all Harrisonville's children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. Signed, J. Goldman, Mayor. Your bail is to the Happy Bottom people so that they can be with us this evening. Okay, let's move on to public participation. Agenda request forms. I understand we have one. Mr. Batwood.
Yes, I mean, we received one tonight. If you look me back at his written out his concern and staff review of that information, we'll discuss on that. So, yes, the issue that you have, information tonight, if you want to present to the board.
Mr. Yoder, can you touch the microphone?
My name is Dan Yoder. I live at Campbell, Dewey, Pearl Street here in Harrisonville. I've lived there for five years. And I request a time clock here to talk to you about two water bills there. I'll have two water bills come through today. I averaged water bill throughout the entire year ever since I moved in, averaged about about a thousand gallons a month. It was at low of two hundred gallons at one time to twenty-one hundred gallons, depending on the season. Three years ago, I started a hobby of raising tomato plants. I planted twenty-four tomato plants, took them to the sun. Half of these are in five-gallon buckets. The other half sit in a little four-bay garden plot in front of my house. They get a gallon of water when I water. There's a fifteen-foot fireball that I planted fireballs on. They get water twice a week across the front of my five, not of my yard. There's some marigolds up there that water them once a week. Like I said, one of these tomato plants gives a gallon of water. My first one mounted only four days, four times a week. I think it gets hot and it gets bigger. I water them every day with one gallon at a time. All this watering is done with a water wand and on shower mode. You know, one of these has got several different settings. All of this watering, everything, about thirty gallons, and I'm done. I do not water my yard. I do not wash my truck. I do a five-minute shower three nights a week. There is no outside watering though on Sunday. And five water use is at a bare minimum. This year, January to February, I use six hundred gallons of water. February to March, I use seven hundred. March to April, I use thirteen hundred gallons of water with the tomato plant out. Four, seven, to five, six. April, May, I use two thousand gallons. That was when I set, because I evolved out, caused my hot water. Fifth month to sixth month, I use eighteen hundred gallons. That's when it starts to get hot. The sixth month to seventh month, I got billed from nine thousand six hundred gallons of water. Hasn't done anything good on one thing. The following, I called them up several times through the week, talking to someone in the city, called. And they said, get back with me in three days because they're going to read the meter in for the next one. I got back with them and they said, I got bad news for you. Your next one is going to be twelve thousand nine hundred gallons. And the entire year of two thousand nineteen, I want to use eleven thousand four hundred gallons, the whole year.
Mr. Yoder, let me go just a second. You know, the process for the agenda, to be on the agenda, is that you're allowed to speak in three-minute increments. You use your first three minutes. So now I would ask the board, if you want to allow this to go on additional three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. All right, we may proceed with three more minutes. Go ahead.
Well, prior to this, two thousand nineteen, I used eleven thousand four hundred gallons. Year before, eleven thousand six hundred gallons. Two months, water bill equals two years of water use. That's impossible. It can't be done. City come out, I wrote them a letter, a small letter requesting that they check it out. I paid for two thousand gallons in good faith. They got a call today that Friday, and then said they had checked the meter out, everything looked good. They cannot figure for the life of them where this water is coming from. They said, I do see you get to go in Monday and pay for the rest of the water because I'm too deep for shutting off. When I wrote this letter, I asked for help. That was the help I got. I believe if the meter now is reading the pipe, it can't be enough. When they checked the meter and put it back in, I watered it back normally. I had a professional plumber check the house, everything out there. There was nothing leaking. There is a crack in the ground between the meter and the house that you could run a two-foot dipstick down into and dry it well. The weight of all that water could weigh a hundred and eighty-four thousand pounds. If that came into my basement, it would take that old tile facing floor right down into the ground. The amount of water would fill my basement completely up, and it would twenty-four foot thirty basement, seven foot solid, would fill that completely up four times. All this for twenty-five tomato plants. I was told I had to pay up before they were cutting me off. That was no help I made. I had to avoid requests from my family's flyers, my heart patients, for a pay payment to be put in the box. When they told me I hadn't paid up, I didn't get off the phone because I was down in Angeles and had, had one set away from hospital. I requested to talk to you about this, be able to speak my five minutes so everyone knew what was going on. I've been told of several disgruntled people that they will not do anything for you because if they do something for you, will have to do it for everybody else. For this, I will respond with this. Your people are our city lifeboat. I'm in my water over my head, and I'm asking for help. Will you let me get in my lifeboat? Will you help me out? Or will you say, we're not going to help you because if we did that, we'd have to help the other people?
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Appreciate it. Board, you have reports here in your packet from staff that evaluate the issue. Do you have any questions of staff at this time? Board?
We're all meter, excuse me, we're all meter, we're all meter readings, and this will be for staff, so.
Mr. Yoder, you can be seated. Thank you.
Were all of meter readings always read or were there any estimates that, I know that the report said that they were, they were read around the time, but has there been some time when it was estimated?
There were no estimates.
Everyone of them were read?
No, there were no estimates.
Any other questions on the board?
One of the board of questions. Do you have any outside spigots out of your house? Just curious.
One.
Where is that located?
Yeah, right next to my driveway. And my driveway, all is great in my house, runs downhill through the street. It's all lined up water things that in front of us has got a valve that you have to squeeze on for the water to come out. When I get done watering, I shut the spigot off, and then I squeeze it again to release the fracture off the hose. Hope it doesn't have a common fracture or water leak last month.
Alderman Zaring.
Yes, I just had a question because once Mr. Yoder stated that the meter came back out and checked the meter, and whatever we did, what is it exactly we did that seems to have mixed issue on that? I appreciate it.
Mr. Zaring.
Staff's perspective on that is that it was never an issue. We verified that the meter read, read correctly, and verified that those readings are active. There should be nothing that would cause a meter to speed up and then miraculous and stuff like that.
That's why I was wondering if it might solve the problem after that reading was that, what do we do during the reading that would solve the problem? Were we looking at especially taking it out?
So, the water staff, I think probably first record took the meter out, runs it on a pinch, takes a minute of new meter, verifies that it reads exactly the same, put it back in the barrel. From there, we verified the electronic aspect of it. We verified the electronics of the visual read of the axle dial. The water went through the meter. What happens to the water after it goes to the meter is unknown. There are certain things that we can't know. Then we, then we took it out, and that's where we get into the hourly reads. So we can clearly see on certain days in the graph that there are higher consumption rates based on a set period time. So we can read the forty previous days in the meter because that data is stored within the electronic of the electronic meter. Within that, we can do twenty-four hours of reading for each of those forty days. The graphs indicate the days which had the highest amount of usage and the times of day that that usage occurred.
Okay, so if I understand, just trying to understand this right, the graph that you sent us here, basically you're saying that there were certain times that it was high and then it was low? So it's not like it was high across the board, like there's leaks or?
No, this was not indicative of a traditional leak or somebody leaking in the ground or even constantly leaking. This is indicative of an inherent leak.
Something else, Alderman Zaring? Alderman, you want to help?
I have two questions. So, Mr. Yoder, is this the first year that you did tomato plants, your plant, or have done that?
Say it again.
Is this the first year that you did, that you planted tomato plants? Have you other plants?
Three years planted the same amount of tomato plant as everything was.
Okay. Okay, Jimmy, how much did you talk about? Two months, a dollar amount?
I believe there was a hundred and eighty, seven hundred and ninety, something like a dollar bill one month, and two hundred and eighteen dollars. That is indicative of everything. That's not just the water, that's the total bill. I have it right on my laptop, and so specifically the exact water amount. We can see disorderly through some of the summer period, Mr. Yoder, you see it goes from a few hundred gallons up to around two thousand gallons, somewhere in that neighborhood. We can see that disorderly through the summer months and then to, you know, trends down with the wear. You can see those trends, but even no amount of investigation, testing, that can find anything wrong with the equipment or the meter, nor can explain what happened to it after it leaves the last device in our system. So, you know, all of our testing is to prove the validity of the device. Once we continue to try to prove that out, there, there's just, at that point, we're guessing what could happen.
You've been there for three years? How many years have you lived there? How many, how many years have you lived there?
Five.
Five years? And so for that five years, you've never had a fill of ten gallons, twelve gallons, gallons, you know?
Alderman Davidson.
Any indication what you're doing on those days between seven and, seven and noon? I mean, did anybody inquire about that from the city? We talked, because obviously you've got the graphs and the specific days. Is there any inquiries in holding this up?
Mr. Yoder's daughter also came and visited with us. She indicated that potentially that was when waterings happened. That's just speculation. That's speculation by us, and I'm not comfortable making that speculation. I am comfortable with the data and the device. We tested the device in a way. We proved the data. We contacted our service provider for the metering software to look, is there any way this could be inherent? You know, if you pause the history, we can watch that meter and those reels roll through. This is the exact same meter running the exact same, uh, public works off the, when I'll set a tandem meter. So they put a second meter in on top of that meter. It read, for the period, it read a usage of about two hundred gallons, and both meters read it as bad.
And during that, during that time, that you're still watering the same that you have been the previous ones?
Everything is the same, is the same, is the same time in the morning, every day of the week. It's not, it's not varied.
So is that when you water, or at between seven and noon, is that when you water twice?
Thank you for the question.
Just one last question. You did have a plumber come out and take a look.
We had a licensed insurance plumber that came out. He checked everything. He checked the hot water heater, he checked the school, we see if it was leaking, if it wasn't, the hot water heater not leaking. I went down into the basement, checked where the water comes in from the outside. There's a hole that's bigger round where this thing comes in. If there were any water that was running between the meter and the house, it would come running that hole. My basement is as, looks like a full drop inside. There's not been any water in there at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, board. We'll go on into the approval of the minutes, and at this point, I would ask the audience and the board to make sure your in-stall ones are silent. First of all, is the minutes of the Board of Alderman on the seventy.
Mike Alderman, you heard?
Second. I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner to approve the minutes of the Board of Alderman from August seventeenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the work session, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Zaring. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now the minutes of the executive session from August third. You have those in your envelope. I would ask you, please make sure you sign those and return them to the court. Looking for a motion to approve, August third, minutes.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. And then lastly, the minutes of the executive session from August eleventh. Again, you have those in your envelope. Please sign them and return them to the court. I am looking for a motion to approve.
Mr. Yoder.
So I have a.
A motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items. First up is the appointments to the Board of Alderman adjustments. All right, I'm looking for reappointments, actually. Gerald Saling has been serving as an alternate for the Board of Alderman Adjustments, and we would be moving to approve him as a full but fully pledged member. And I'm looking for reappointment of Shannon Sipple and Jennifer, what's Jennifer, Clancy?
Peter.
Jennifer Peters, thank you. Jennifer Saling also to be reappointed. Those are all five year terms expiring in September. I'm looking for a motion to approve all three. Mayor, I think that's Jennifer Peters, not the other. It's Gerald Saling.
Yeah.
It's Jennifer Peters.
Yes, but it's Gerald Saling. There's three. Gerald Saling is an alternate now moving to a full-time Board seat, and then Jennifer Peters and Shannon Sipple are being reappointed to full terms. So I'm looking for a motion for all three.
You're going to push it?
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Turner to approve the reappointments of Shannon Sipple, Gerald Saling, and Jennifer Peters to the Board of Alderman Adjustment. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those appointments are approved. I don't think any of them are in the audience, but we certainly appreciate your service to the board.
Councilwoman Forty-Five.
Councilwoman Forty-Five, ordinance vacating alley right of way between five oh five East Wall Street and six oh one East Wall Street in Harrisonville, Castaway, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Mayor, board, we received an application for a vacation request relating an alley. The alley, you can best see in your packet on page seventy-four, highlighted in, highlighted in yellow. It starts with Wall Street and goes south to the east, east-west alley. Ray Lowers, his wife, child are here. Lowers of the alley comes up at six, six oh one East Wall Street. The way this started was that Ray gave me a call one day and said that he had had a survey down on his property because he was wanting to put up a fence and wanted to verify the boundaries. And when he received the survey, it was done by our survey, he had found that the survey showed that there was about six to eight feet of alley that was built on his property, and this was done years ago. And he was wanting to talk about, you know, how to reconcile that. And then also he'd been having issues with people driving fast, often times late at night, up and down the alley, people loitering sometimes in the, in the back of his property, and, you know, what, what could we do about, do about that? I told him, I said that, you know, if, you know, if it's, if the alley is not used very much, if both property owners, and there's just two people that order it, if they both can have, provide that and get access to their houses, you know, it might be maybe the way to handle this is through, through a vacation. We sent out, they made the application, we sent out letters to the property owners and lot, which we're required to do. There's a, in your, in our ordinance, there's a thirty-day comment period when we receive an application for, for a vacation. We did receive calls. We don't usually get them. Of course, this is the first time we've been dealing with existing, or an improved alley. Often times the alleys that we receive applications for vacation for are unimproved alleys. And we, we received enough feedback and information from people that, you know, my initial feeling was if it was slightly used, then, and both property owners had access, maybe we could vacate it. But with the feedback that I gained through the comment period, I, I can't support it. I think that alley gets used by a number of people, similar to a street. Usually alleys are just used to gain access by people who have garages and driveways on them, and this seems to be used to grate, grate more, grate more by, by people like it were a street. So this has been a head scratcher. It was a flowers, it's been a pleasure to deal with. We did take a look at the issue of the overlap of the alley and his property. We found that, I mean, our city attorney and Alex took a look at it, and we did find that the legal, in the legal description for the alley, or in the legal description for his property, there's an exemption for streets, which in, in our city attorney's opinion, that streets and alleys are the same. So, you know, many, many years ago, when that alley- So, you know, many, many years ago, when that alley was constructed, it was, it was included. It does overlap his property. But because in the legal description, there's an exception for streets. This property would accept streets and that includes alleys. City attorney said there's no problem with, with, there's no encroaching problem with the alley encroaching onto his property. So anyway, what we would propose, and Mr. Blowers is here and I think he'd like to say a few words after I sit down, but what we'd like to propose is, one, we, our recommendation is that we not vacate the alley. It's just used by. In the future, we would like to work with Mr. Blowers and some of his neighbors. Once there's an unimproved alley that runs east west behind his house, and that's where I understand there were loitering problems in the past. One time the city, I think they considered vacating, but it got turned down by a split vote. You know, I'm looking at it and I'm thinking as long as we reserve access for paid care utilities like we always do, when we vacate an unimproved alley, you know, we need to look at it, but there's a possibility that maybe it can be vacated so that Mr. Blowers could better fence his property and better provide security for his family. The other thing I just need to mention, because I think there's some people in the audience that use the alley, is this alley is one of three alleys that before all this came up, Rodney Jacobs was planning to asphalt and overlay either this fall or next spring, depending upon how like did fall work out, either this fall or next spring, overlay it. If you do vacate it, the ordinance is set up so that you can vacate it if you choose to. But if you don't vacate it, then it would be overlaid and improved at the end of later this fall or next spring. But that'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Blowers.
First of all, questions from the board to Mr. Crowe. Do you have questions for Mr. Crowe?
This alley.
Alderman Turner.
It's a, it is a one-way. One-way northbound.
Roger DeWine, I don't see it. I mean, like you said, he's saying for down fifty go down years ago. You know that there's probably more of this in town than what we know about?
Yes.
Mr. DeWine, can I start you a question? Good evening, welcome. Can I review the map?
Thank you. Thank you for all of the mayor for this opportunity. A lot of the things that Mr. Crowe presented is true. I'm not contesting this, he had a right to, but they had it right in the alley. It's a testing of eight feet upon the whole length of my property. Is that the issue? That's eight feet, so that's thirteen hundred square feet. That's ten percent of the property that according to the D, that is set up in the Cass County Order of Rights and the Granger's Office, is that we are still getting property taxes money. I do recognize the exception of the roads in there. However, state of Missouri does not define a road width. So the exception clause did not be done correctly, in my opinion. Also inside of this, when they did lay this down, they decided now they took the path that used to exist and didn't survey it and haven't checked out. They just said, oh, through the road, it's probably. The reason I say that is there is a hundred-year-old tree stump in my neighbor's yard that joins the alley with me. And there's also his barn. Both those items are actually where the alley is supposed to be, not where it is right now. Also, and like you said, if Mr. Jacobs opened the roads apartment, he is actually going to go through and wants to repave it. But the alleys been neglected for so bad, it's actually, you can see down in some spots of it, you can actually see the gravel underlaying it below two layers of asphalt there too, which is bad. So it's in a bad state of repair. And that's another part of the reason why we petitioned for the vacation of the alley. I do recognize that the alley is used during full time during COVID, I've been working from home. I've actually seen about average ten to fifteen cars a day. So I do recognize there is a deal right there where the board uses it. The challenge that we've come into is how do we resolve this? Because we are paying property taxes on a road that the city is using and using my money to use there as a property tax, you know, the property tax on the landowner. That, we're trying to resolve this. If the city wants to, you know, resolve this, and Roger kind of felt, we were going back and forth, we were talking almost daily, real pile there. And we're just trying to resolve, what can we do? What can we do? And that's why I do go forward with the petition to vacate the alley. Is to go forward and take care of that. Also, last night, I got ahold of a melody detector. And I went out to where the property pens should be. The alley covered over that. And the melody detector, it's not perfect. I recognize that. It's a guessment. It's a guessment with science behind it. I found the survey pens where the asphalt's been covered over by the city in the past. At least the melody detector picked up where those locations are as well. So that's, that's the challenge we stand for. I do recognize, and said the city recognized it has the right to look at it, but it didn't cross the teeth and knock the eyes and give it a finish for this. And that's what I'm saying, is can we resolve this? And can we resolve the property tax issue in this matter?
Mr. Crowe, may I address, can you speak to the question about property taxes?
Well, when the city attorney took a look at it, one of the things that we asked Mr. Mauer and Alex had looked at is, is Ray do any sort of compensation for the fact that the alley does overlay approximately eight feet, six to eight feet of his property? City attorney said based upon the legal description, he didn't feel that the city would owe any amount of money. I don't think it would be a great deal of money, Mr. Blowers, like six years prior. I don't think it would be a great deal. I'm concerned about the precedent. We've got these kinds of situations. We've got a town since decades built on a grid. And we're going to have these, these situations like we have here and a number of other places. The basis upon the legal description, the city attorney doesn't think that anything would be, would be. I think it would, you know, the amount of tax that there would be, if Ray was asking to be reimbursed for the tax of ten percent, ten, eleven percent of his property, I think it would be very normal. And we're just one of the tax, we're just one of the taxing units. If he pays you, I mean, the property you have to build only ten or seven parts of the city. So, you know, if we get over it, it would be almost nothing or very little. But the bottom line, the bigger concern is, do we owe it at all? City attorney, this is a point that we don't. And I'm real concerned about the precedent being set as tax carry money.
Can you say, Mr. Jacobs, in the audience, do you have anything that you'd like to add as far as the overlay of the alley or the condition of the alley or any plans for the alley? Want to provide to the board?
All of our, any of our alleys are personal. We do, we do the basis, we do the score number of streets. The alleys are, we were shapes. And we only used to address that. But over, we just shared a budget of three thousand dollars. We had thirteen thousand dollars left as a, if everybody knows, all of our agents is correct. We should ask my rapport. We wanted to do three alleys, Johnson, Marter. And it's just one block, the house and the seven. You know, say, well, we didn't pile it in. We didn't, we didn't, but we estimate it, but go try to make that, put it to where it was here. Right, this is the panel. We've been patching it. So I try to get a lot of water, a lot of water. So he is fully correct. Do you agree?
Questions from the board? Or comments from the board?
This alley that was speaking of is one that I personally use any time. It was my understanding from the original concern, from the view that there were plenty of automobiles speeding coming down this alley. And quite frankly, if you ever been up and down that alley, you're not going to be able to speed up or down because the tacos are pretty good there and are incredible. Last year, I had a tire that was split by one of those. I think it was, when it was icy. And it didn't really get conditioned. So I don't think speeding is an issue. Yeah, possibly if we did it right. And then in terms of people going up and down that alley, if you look at the layout of the streets that come off of the panes and north to East Pearl Street, and that's the only way to get to East Pearl Street. From McCann are those alleys. And I think, Roger, you could tell me whether are there two or three of them that will go north to? Three? Gotcha. Okay. And the third one is cleared up by Cross, Amherst. Or rather, rather. And so in order to get from, say, the forward stop of Inverness and McCann up to East Pearl Street, that's the first opportunity you have to get past, let's say, My House. Past My House in order to get back out to East Pearl Street. And so if we close that, we're going to have to go to, you're going to have a four block area. At any rate, and taking view aside, because I will recuse myself very well from the book, there are at least six houses that are going to be affected by closing that. And so I would just simply put that in to make it, to make the perspective of what's going to occur. So you have an idea of how many people are going to be affected by that. And I agree. It's unfortunate that these things happen. But when you have an old town, Harrisonville is an old town, and you start looking through the houses, anytime you see a house going this way and a house going this way in the old parts of town, the area that goes down between them is considered an alley. And so if we start getting into that time, and the difference is, is the, it's, there are alleys that are being used and alleys that are not being used, nevertheless, they are alleys. So we have to be careful. So just to point out beautiful things.
Thank you. I know you worked hard on this issue. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Miller.
So I know in the past when we brought up doing this and do we not or did we not send out questions to all the neighbors and how they felt about that? Mr. Crowe said that they do. And what was the response?
Were you asking, we sent out surveys about the vacation?
For the neighbors, yes. They're the neighbors, no questions.
Yeah, it was advising that we had an application, sent out, I think about, I don't know, ten letters for seven, maybe a couple of them. And I received four phone calls. Didn't get anything in writing. But I received four phone calls. You know, the people that were, that were, I think I said in here, a couple, one or two were definitely opposed. There was a couple that were just asking questions. And that they said that they did use the alley. And so that was the feedback that I got. And I, some of the board may have also gotten some phone calls.
I did as well, yes.
There was, there was also a sign put in the outer yard, my friend.
Oh, yeah, right, right in front of you.
And I explained specifically to the public.
Here, here, we get a staff report, it says three or four calls have received and the caller has used the alley. And they were concerned about being vacated. One caller owning a house a lot of way indicated that he would apply and may need to be improved alley. Hence, this house, if this alley is vacated. Those were the four calls I heard.
So just one more question. So have we thought about the other alternatives, arguments? Have we discussed? I mean, we know he's thinking he wants this.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just.
I think, yeah. I think we can help out with helping him secure his property if we can vacate the alley that runs east west behind his house. We want to talk to some of the property owners about that first. If we do that, we could hook up a fence that would run parallel to the alley. And it would be like any other time you cross a utility and, you know, if for some reason utilities had to get in there and take down the fence, it's the only possibility to put it back. That's what it is everywhere. In terms of the alley, we talked about speed bumps. We talked about speedrun signs by ten miles an hour. Speed bumps, we don't have any in the community right now. Staff's concerned about starting speed bumps because, you know, there's a lot of, plus there's a lot of dams on the student wall. So right now, we don't have any speed bumps in any of our private alleys. You know, I think the main thing is, if we find a way to help take a look at the alley so that Mr. Blowers can better secure his property with the fence, which is what his initial goal was. You know, he asked what way that we could help with. You know, I don't think there's too many alternatives. Either we vacate the alley or we don't. And our recommendation is that we don't.
Well, you know, when I spoke with Mr. Blowers, we even talked about the alley behind them. And because they're hard lines going through there, he even suggested that as he could build that fence, he could put a gate in there for access for the city to look through. If I remember correctly.
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
Any other additional questions from the board? Paul Robinson.
I was just going to, just wanted to make sure. So we vacate the alley, it is no longer, that entire alley, once we've had entire block there, that alley is no longer maintained by the city. And we have, since we know that this may be a problem with other, we already, we still have the problems here. Is there any other, what can we do about the other alleys to fix this so that we're not going through this every, you know, multiple times?
Mr. Crowe, there's actually one of your concerns about establishing a proper name here.
Yeah. In this situation, our city attorneys, and we don't have a problem with the overlap because of the way that the legal description is written for this. But it's a problem. I realize that Ray has another, I believe is otherwise, but city attorney, he just showed to have a problem. You're in charge, and so, you know, we would handle everyone's the same situation. You know, we were going to get out a checkbook and pay for a lock split and write somebody a check for, you know, passing this case the past six years. You know, we would start, we would do that for, we would probably, well, we would do it for everybody. We treat everybody the same. This is the first time I've had this kind of request. I think most people, just like we take care, everybody takes care of the right way in front of their house, between sidewalk and the street. I think a lot of people can just take care of, understand that alleys may be not getting as they're supposed to be. But this is the first time I have that I've dealt with it here. And I think most people are just part of the town, things like that, to be exact.
And with that, I don't know. So it's been there for years. And we're talking a long, long time. Not sure how the home guard there. But since it's been used as an alley, I mean legally, doesn't that kind of make it that way? I mean, if I've got a, if I've got a piece of property that's next to me that I'm taking care of, people own it, they don't, they're not in Harrisonville, but I'm taking care of it, taking care of it, and doing everything on that, legally, I can go in a petition to say, okay, I want to make that my property.
Yeah, exactly, and that's what we have here tonight, is what they're asking, is that for this to be reverted back to the original property owners. But right now, as it stands, that alley is still a city rightaway. It has been for quite some time.
Correct.
And all the alleys are like that. Just like you said, it's the first time we've had this, right?
I think it's historically.
So, first time you've come across this, okay.
I'm puzzled. I heard it was pretty old, we got a lot of alleys and stuff. In the older part of town, the alleys, they tried to put them down the middle. I mean, half the alleys on one corner, the other half on the other one. I mean, that's just how it went through. City maintained them, but they would just go through. And we had vacant a lot of alleys, but they were grown up, let go, you couldn't tell that the alley was going to be there. We had no problem doing it, and then each half went back to the old, but this is a improved alley and it's used a lot. It's, it's almost essential to it as a road, but it's a little bit narrow. But the part that wanted to vacate is kind of from around, from the alley east and west, just too long. So, not, not all the way from McCann up, but just from the other alley up. So, the city would still have to maintain that first block. And then, then at that point, you have to turn, go down the ground. Yeah, because there's one way. So, yeah, so if we vacate, then we go north a block, then you have to go west a block, then you have to go back south a block, and right back to McCann, which is...
Could you session board, are you ready to vote? This is an ordinance.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I kind of get the impression that maybe we're out of this conversation as far as Mr. Blowers and the city goes. And if there's any other options, is, is there a possibility we could table this for tonight? Or there's any further discussion? And maybe come up with a feasible option and alternative? Is that possible?
Mrs. Paul, you would make a motion to table it, being seconded if the majority of the board agree to be tabled for a future meeting?
I would make a motion and we will have this for the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson to table this council bill until our next meeting. Roll call for me. Alderman Zary?
Aye.
Alderman Reeves?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dorah?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Miller is excused.
So, Alderman, that council bill thirty-five is tabled. And then Council Bill forty-six.
So, Bill forty-six, M.J., N.E., you see ordinance resolution, a resolution of the Harrisonville Board calling to appoint the electric superintendent as the director of the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission and to appoint the public works director as an alternate director of the same organization.
Mayor, board, this is a, this is a, House United M.P.A. has a directory for voting vendors that pair of boards. And we want to make the electric superintendent, the voting director of the public works, the alternate. It's important that Harrisonville is at the table with both of these boards. As you know, this is where we buy our power, our power supply. And so, the last time that this was done, in 2018, and so this needs to be updated with the current structure of staff.
Questions from the board to Mr. Radler? Seeing none, I would send out a motion.
Make a motion?
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorah Turner to refer to Council Bill forty-six. I'd like to know if Alderman? Alderman Zary?
Aye.
Alderman Dorah?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Reeves?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
And Alderman Miller is excused. Thank you, Council Bill forty-six, the council resolution zero-two-four, Council Bill forty-seven.
Council Bill forty-seven, ordinance to make shady lane between Lake Avenue and Lexington alley a one-way, right west, and establish an effective...
Yeah, Mayor, we're all ready. This ordinance, as the city attorney indicated, would change the current two-way traffic, shady lane between Lake Avenue and Lexington to a one-way street westbound on the street. It's been brought to my attention that although I indicated in the staff report, previous action, none, that's not really the case. Apparently, this has been brought up in the past. I just didn't know about it until this weekend. The key issues, if we move forward with this, staff will give that reducing, I'm sorry, changing the direction only to one way would reduce the potential crash, traffic issues, the crash history along shady lane. And we've included in the council packet, some photographs of a crash that did occur recently. The current pavement condition of shady lane is in a poor condition, which doesn't help the traffic when it's in poor condition. I did indicate that the width of the pavement is twelve feet. I actually got out and measured it. It's eleven, not a wide one, we thought. If it is approved, staff will, will install, install one-way signage on shady lane at, with direct traffic only to westbound between Lake and Lexington. And the next block to the west between Lexington and North Independence is already a one-way direction, westbound. So, this would then provide two consecutive blocks, one-way, westbound only. Staff comments are that this section of shady lane between Lake Avenue and Lexington is extremely narrow for two-way traffic. I think you would agree with me, you know, you just can't pass two cars on this, on this road. There are currently five residents that would be directly affected by this. I did indicate six, there are five. And there is a, a purpose of, you know, the northeast corner, shade of Lexington, where about the trap that the crash did occur. Before I give my recommendation, I would kind of like to tell you the rest of the story that we learned over the weekend. And I'm not going completely off script, Brad, we talked about this in staff. As the new get on the block, I'm really kind of amazed at the number of streets that are really, we only have fifteen feet rightway around the downtown area. And obviously, there are already a number of one-way streets in this area. But, you know, we can't change what's already been done, and we just try to make better of what we already have. So, this request did not come from city staff. It came from a couple of residents that were on the western of the block. There is one resident, she may be in the audience tonight, that she is opposed to this change. She lives in the middle of the block, and she has let the staff know that she is against this passage. She has told us that in the past winters, when it becomes snowy and icy, it may be a challenge to go westbound. And her only option would be go to eastbound, so if it's a one-way street going westbound, she's kind of going against the rules. And, and as I indicated, the width of the pavement is not for two vehicles. Maybe a couple bicycles, but definitely not two cars. So, although, yes, in the report, staff did recommend changing shady lane to a one-way, we think there's an option, it might be best to table it and actually put a traffic counter on the street and let's really determine how many cars we have that go off this block. Now, do you have to answer any questions from the board?
Alderman Dickerson?
How many rectified the truck that slid off the road, how many other ones have been on the street, you know?
Well, the truck that slid off the road, and then there was a, a crash that occurred, a vehicle backing out of the daycare. So, to my knowledge, she missed out on two.
She's the one who argued here, and any other instances? Alderman Turner?
Now, that road from Lake to West End, it goes down and then back up. So, regardless either way, if you go to the bottom of the hill, it's up both ways. I mean, I mean, if we made it one-way, going east, there could go up. So, I said, and one-way going left, or one-way going up, still, still a hill.
Yes.
Alderman Zary?
So, and my question would kind of be the same there. We're making it go west, there's already another road right next to it that's going west. Would you make two one-way streets going the same way? If we made it go east, is that an option that would maybe help the person that's opposed to? I mean, we're looking at pictures here, and the ones that go east, I don't believe it, is as people. Most parts, I think, of the road property. And I would, maybe, I would agree with you, I think table on this issue would be the best. Because I know with those, I think there were two ladies that initially came in and talked about this. Their idea of a one-way street was just one idea, they had mentioned a couple other things that possibly could have been done there. And like you said, maybe we do a traffic count, you know, take a look at other ways to maybe solve the problem there, other than the one-way street. I think one was to widen the business one, actually, I think both of them, not widen the entire street, but I think the entrance and exit coming in and out of that street would help it out. Because there were people, I guess, pulling into their yard, turning and turning into their yards, and those types of things. So, is there, is there a reason we would make it this way west and not east?
Basically, to be consistent, you've got to keep the traffic going in the same direction. Whereas, you don't, I would say confuse potential riders. You keep the direction in the same, who's going there.
Alderman Turner?
I'm sorry, that, that's such a shady lane from West End to Independence, it's already a one-way going west. So, and then, what the proposed plan is, was look at the way, all the way to, into this. Go in same direction, so as not to confuse people.
Yep, on that, and I should, yeah, and that, that makes sense, I think, so I appreciate that there, you know.
Mr. Radler?
One of the, one of the things that we talked about, what it is, is we would like to get a true traffic count of which way the traffic is coming, how many times it comes in there. And we really had a discussion about, really, there's a lot of, maybe a citywide downtown area especially, review that needs to be done of all roads. Because this is not the only narrow road, as Mr. Rivers pointed out, and we've got a plethora of alleys that got turned into streets. And we do not have the capacity really to widen those streets, because you only have fifteen-foot easement currently. So, if you went to widen those streets to what they needed to be for the actual traffic, it would be a price tag that probably nobody wants to pay. And so, essentially, what we have to do is come up with a plan for that entire area that makes a little bit better sense. Especially where we have a lot of these alleys that are narrow alleys, and add a complete plan. You know, the, the first roadway being one-way, as Mr. Rivers pointed out, makes sense that you keep going in what was already established. We can't find any data of what they based that off of when they first came up with that, that one-way that is, that's already there and established. Even though that there is where Ms. Wyatt is currently located, it goes both ways uphill except one is a bigger incline than the other incline, even though they're both up, and one is a more extreme incline. And there may be some things we can do when it comes to emergency situations, emergency weather, and those kind of things that can be provided for some of the concern that she has, that we can be able to do. But since this was kind of brought up to residents, and the board asked a little bit, we thought, well, we go forward with that. And since we had a resident that was against that, and we had a more big plan, is we, we really think this needs to be looked at with a traffic count. But additionally, we really need to look at all of the downtown area, especially a lot of the alleys, and making sure that there's a good, consistent study, that plan of why we're doing what we're doing. Because that's, that's some of the things that we're struggling with on the directions and which directions.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I'd like to make a motion on the table this discussion.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson to table, until the go-forward, until our next meeting. Roll call for me.
I have a motion to the board. Instead of the next meeting, we'll be able to have a time for...
I did, I did, if I said next meeting, I...
And we, and we make it to one of the counties, and then we'll notify those residents that that'll be coming up before you vote.
So, the motion will be mentioned, then Council Bill forty-six tabled until a future date after the fact, that is, wait, then, you know, fact.
And we'll notify the residents.
So, I have a first and a second, now I'll go call for it. Alderman Dorah?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zary?
Aye.
Alderman Reeves?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Miller is excused.
Spark me a moment. I apologize for being out of order here. I also live on Lake, and that alley is the only way I can get in and out of my driveway. And if I was to go from east to west, I have to turn more than a ninety-degree turn to get in my driveway. It's very different. And because of that fact, although itself, as I may admit, I would much rather see you go from west east. And I understand that the point is already been brought up, that I've been split, Lexington going one-way in the direction. But you're gonna make it very difficult for me to use my own driveway and I use it every day. So, when this comes up again, I would appreciate you all to at least consider it. My name is Jeff Maloney, five hundred north of Lake.
Jeff Maloney, five hundred north of Lake.
I'm not opposed to a one-way street, but if you just go to the other direction, we can get in down my own driveway.
Thank you, sir.
If you all come through there, you'll see what I mean. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Council. Excuse me, please. My name is Kate Wyatt, and I'm the one that lives at the bottom of that hill. And I have dealt with this in nineteen seventy-five. And I do not want to make a problem to the city. I do not want to be out of order or anything. But I am the only one that lives on that street. That gentleman there lives at the corner. All the rest of those people live on the corners. I am the only one that's going to be affected if you change it. If you change it, it's gotta go from east to west. Thank you. I also live on that street. I have two pieces of property on that street. I don't care which direction it goes.
Excuse me, ma'am, we will have a future meeting, we'll be discussing this again, and you'll have a proper opportunity to grant the question. It's been tabled for a future meeting. Thank you. Council Bill forty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city of Harrisonville, deserving to enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement as less than the Carroll County Trust Company has less orders to finance the acquisition and equipping of 2019... the acquisition and equipping of 2019 Spark Rescue Pumper Truck and approving certain documents related thereto.
Mr. Rattler? I approach Mr. Rattler, please. Mr. Rattler will introduce you.
The, this is before tonight, the first approval for the fire truck was done on the Denver, the 19th of 2018. And so the board kept it in 2019 to start being built. And it's just now being to where it's not being built. So I'm sure that Chief Rattler can let you know how long it takes to build a pumper truck. But this was originally approved by the Board of Aldermen on the 19th of November, 2018.
And it does take a year. It will be delivered in a new truck. On September 2nd, we went out for bids for the financing of this. So the delay from last year to this year, the single benefit, perhaps the single benefit of COVID is exceptionally low interest rates. So you received nine bids for one pumper truck from nine different institutions. Your local bankers were contacted. Country Club Bank was, was one of the bidders as well. They were very enthusiastic from one of the... As mentioned, Carroll County Trust was the low bid at 1.625. The high bid was 3.25, and that was a variable rate. So you received nine bids for this financing. And so the resolution in front of you is to award it to the lowest bid. And that's a 10-year fixed financing secured by the fire truck.
That's a pretty smooth deal.
It is under 1.5%.
3.5% for a second. Does the board have any questions, either Chief Rattler, or Mr. Rattler? This is an ordinance.
I think we should, we should start our vote before we say three.
Second. I have a motion from Alderman Turner, with a second of Alderman Miller, to suspend, to suspend the rule on Council Bill 48, that fans actually have a second reading. Alvin Darian, I'm sorry, roll call.
Alvin Dorah?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Miller?
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson?
Aye.
Alvin Darian?
Aye.
Alvin Reese?
Aye.
Alvin Davidson?
Aye.
Alvin Miller is excused.
Council Bill 48, an ordinance authorizing the City of Harrisonville to enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement. As less see, the Carroll County Trust Company has less authority to finance the acquisition and equipping of 2019 Spark Rescue Pumper Truck and approving certain documents related thereto.
Alvin Davidson?
Aye.
Alvin Reese?
Aye.
Alvin Darian?
Aye.
Alvin Dorah?
Aye.
Alvin Miller?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson?
Aye.
Alvin Miller?
Thank you, Council Bill 48, group that agrees, vote is 3.509. Council Bill 49.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Bill 49, the resolution authorizing the city to contribute funds to the Chamber of Commerce Healthy Harrisonville Program.
Mr. Rattler, as you know, the Chamber, the Long Haven Festival, with that, a lot of their activities to the public have been terminated or suspended this year because of the concern for citizens and residents of those coming in from the outside. And so there's a initiative now, called Healthy Harrisonville Program, that the Chamber is doing, which will help the Chamber in the conditions that are going on. We believe, based on the data that's been provided to us by the board as a group, they have shown through that that this would be eligible for COVID reimbursement. And so the city would like to issue the 5,000 for the Healthy Harrisonville to the Chamber. We also will turn this in as a COVID reimbursement expense for businesses and loss of revenue as a, as a support to the Chamber, as well as support to local businesses here in New York.
Mr. Bush, who would step to the podium, this is Cheryl Bush. She's the president of the board directors from the Chamber. And do you have anything you'd like to say, or?
Good evening, everybody. This was a gut-wrenching decision to cancel this. We'd appreciate anything, it was our major fundraiser. This consideration to do this is great, appreciated, to keep the Chamber healthy. So thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Bush? So he's canceled the Long Haven Festival and the parade and the carnival, and the entire event?
Yes, everything that went along with it.
Okay, thank you. Alvin Dickerson?
The business for 5,000, that's a 10,000.
The...
The city, you know, later, there's the 5,000. You read all the way down, it says 5,000. I was confused the same way, 10,000, I didn't even...
Right.
In the past, in the past, the city has partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, and the city usually have been right around 10,000. But this is to give them 5,000, which we should expect to be reimbursed.
And on October 1st, we're going to get that.
Yes.
I have a motion.
Sir.
I have a motion from Alderman Miller, with a second of Alderman Dorah, to approve Council Bill 49. I'd like to roll call, please.
Alvin Miller?
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Miller is excused. Alvin Dorah?
Aye.
Alvin Davidson?
Aye.
Alvin Reese?
Aye.
Alvin Darian?
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill 49 is approved. We give Council Resolution 025. Alderman Committee reports, Alvin Dickerson?
Aye.
Alvin Davidson?
I don't know.
Alvin Miller?
I'm not.
Alvin Turner? Alvin Reese? Alvin Dorah?
Sure.
No, I like it, I see you.
We had town hall, not this Sunday, but next Saturday, the 19th. And our superintendent of Harrisonville will be there, so this is enough.
And Alvin Darian?
Okay, actually, I have been busy since our last meeting. Brad has that, because I've been working on a bunch of things. But I do want to thank Mr. Clark, specifically, to sit down and, I scheduled a meeting with him so I could understand the whole economic development, and make sure that I'm thinking the same way as the bigger picture on that, of course, I wasn't on half of it, so. So it's very informative, so it got me smarter on what was going on. And Brad, I hit you up on a couple of things, dealing with trash and all of that. And I can't thank the staff and Brad and Mr. Clark and everybody. Because every time I've had an issue, or every time I get a phone call from somebody and I need to answer it, I have, it's like immediate response on that. So I really do appreciate that. Definitely, since, you know, I've been in a position here, I think we definitely need to relook at the entire, all of our alleys and all of our one-ways and all of our streets to come up with that, planning to actually solve the problems. So we're out there.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for those kudos to the staff, Mr. Clark. Thank you for the audience, thank you for the expertise that you bring and interact. Thank you for prompt response to the Alderman. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I have a question, one quick.
Sir.
Have we had an issue with the newly installed stop sign? We've seen a play that I'm worried, there's going to be traffic problems that...
Oh, okay.
I can't go up top of that, we need to talk, so I'm sorry.
That's good. So the question is about the newly installed four-way stop at Independence and Washington?
We, thank you, remember the board, we had no problems. I did have one individual today saying that he continues to run the stop sign. So self-reliance is breaking the body, and has to be improved, but as a law, it's... As I said, the officers have been out there in Washington, I think the additional stop sign that Rodney put out really helps. And I think he said until October 1st, that's the one to be up there. That'll be taken down. I do think that it makes that intersection much safer, especially before an accident. So I think that's very good. If we meet stop, please.
Thank you, chief. Question? Alvin Davidson, any other questions from anyone else on the board? No? Mr. Rattler?
Yes, sir. The city's staff has contracted, contracted, we're going to get A and B, we've got some repairs and possible structural problems with A and B out there. And so we're putting that together to put as part of the capital project creation project. The electrical age agreement with the three utility alignments in the City of Harrisonville, we sent the three main crew, Alexandria, Louisiana, with that, Hurricane Laura. The crew returned on the 6th of September. And the city, Alexandria indicated that our electrical crew should have that same job in repairing the electrical grid of their city. So we can make the electrical crew for a good job they did to help out. The Shaintree Company and the Electrical Department is along with the city. But the city is now utilizing Ashville, I said, we're... The Street Department, thanks for those contracted for the microservicing, for the one and a half lanes that have started there on Elm Street and James. And the board, Rodney gave us a report today that moving along with that on the microservicing, the cooler weather has been a little more challenging for them. And I think it's wonderful, the cooler weather, but it's not really good on the microservicing. So they're continuing to move forward and planning to complete all the scheduled work tomorrow. Those, those galaxies, and I'm sure, hopefully after school, they'll be able to take up the rest of that. The 2020 citywide cleanup for residential customers only are headed posted by Minister Base and the City of Harrisonville, Saturday, October the 10th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And it'll be at 1403 South End of Independence Street. And these will be items that will be collected from the neon, free-on-appliance, metal items, gardeners furniture, light destruction, and household trash. Items not being collected are tires, paint, batteries, auto batteries, and brush shingles, oil, yard waste, hazardous chemicals, refrigerated items. So that'll be on October the 10th. Then we received three bids for the listation of one. JCI Industries was one that's, won the bid for the pump, and it'd be 19,655 dollars. And as the engineering requested, for proposals for the city lane spillway replacement, it was due September 3rd, and right now we're reviewing five proposals for work that came in on that. So hopefully we bring in for a few additional information on that at the next meeting. The city also did the property survey and tropical, tropical survey to power the land survey. This is for that south service area project, for 45,360 dollars. Two-point construction finishing up the BDE shower room. We also want to thank them for the temporary door installment at City Hall, week before last. And then we're also putting in after hours the additional cameras and managing of wiring to be installed there in the front entrance. A good thing to point out, if you've got your phone, you can go to your app store. And in your app store, type in Harrisonville Fix It, and you will see the City of Harrisonville's own app, as on every Android or iPhone. This will be a communication tool that residents can use, or Aldermen can use. And this is a complete contact to our city staff, and it allows for residents to follow along in the process of any complaint or any concern that they have. And if you're able to enable do it with a phone, you can take a picture or video if they want, and be able to submit that with it in their complaint as well. It'll be added a quick access to the website, or Facebook, or Mayorville, City News, and even a call to the city, and do a direct call to the city as well, to the main line number there. Daniel's headed that up, did an excellent job of working on this if he had done. And we're hoping it'll be a great tool that a lot of people can use with that. And also, the backend of that is for staff as well, for the Public Works Department, and a lot of the other departments, especially, that there wasn't any work orders that were being utilized at the time, for us to be able to follow different things. What this does is for them to be able to do those work orders. And at the end of the year, we're able to collect the data from that, from your board, and different things that was going on in your board, tickets ever done in your board, what type of activity was most complained about in your board. You'll be surprised, I think, in years' time, what people will tell you is the biggest problem, but actually, people report in those items. And so it's a, it's a good tool on the staff side as well, providing data as well as tracking different things on our side, even if somebody hasn't done it from the public. If we have things that we're working on, we can use the work orders and be able to follow that in the process. So it'll be, I think, an excellent tool for everybody to use. And fairly easy to follow along and be able to sign up. The Board of Building Appeals, if you've seen the report on that August 20th, or August 26th, they have issued the five new order, the five new castle, issued a permit and stated that they're rehabbing that property. The owner, 6001 Newcastle, has agreed to demolish the structure. And Washington has issued a confirmation of fact-finding, and then agrees with demolition. 104 East Pearl has been issued a confirmation of fact-finding and agrees that find it as a dangerous building, and before we go on that demolition. And then, due to those costs that have arrived and involved, if there's no appeal that has been filed over to the city attorney, then those would go to a civil court process. So when people are asking, are we dealing with blighted properties and blighted structures? We've got quite a few of them that we're dealing with, that you see, and move forward. We try to get the homeowners, or the property owners, to take care of that situation where the city has to, because a lot of times it ends up having to be the cities want to. The new, yeah, a new code inspector, he, three weeks, it's three weeks. And he decided that this was not his cup of tea. And so he's come over with us to get an opening for that. The other new code enforcement, Katie Phelps, has started with us. She was from Jose Creek area, and she was moving up to this area. And right now, she'll be starting full-time on the 7th of September. And so we'd like to have her onboard as well. Council beams and the removal of that project for those beams and that hole started today. It's pretty interesting seeing that. I can tell you that the beam that was there and what it was setting on would probably shock you and be surprised that there's never been a problem. And that one, that main beam that you've all been dealing with all these years is mainly been held up by cinder block and bricks. Probably not best route to be able to do those things. So you are getting that fixed, and I think you all will enjoy that. Another good is 402 Sycamore, staff assisted, Chris with a layout of the new home, at 402 Sycamore. And this will be a first, a new home near... And this will be a first, uh, new home near that river for many, many years. So we're seeing, um, an uptick in those type of activities as well. Um, as you all know about the incident that happened at City Hall, and the, uh, customer, I won't say resident, if he wasn't there, that's more personal, the customer that came in, I want to thank the mayor for coming in to support the staff that day, uh, on a very dangerous situation. Thankfully, the court, uh, last Friday upheld a no bond, uh, for that gentleman. Also, he received another felony, uh, for the threats that he made against the judge. Um, that was a part of that process. And, uh, want to thank the additional, the police department on their fast response. Uh, I think it would have been a lot worse if the police department hadn't gotten there when they did. And really, uh, bringing the staff, staff for the different things that was done. We did get the temporary door that was put in, as I sent you all an email with that. Uh, hopefully by next week, the door that we ordered two months ago, uh, will be in. And we also, as I pointed out earlier, the additional, our cameras and the, uh, panic alarm, uh, will be installed. It's unfortunate in the kind of society that we have today that we have to do these things, but the reality is that our best asset is our employees. And we want to make sure that they're safe. And we also want to make sure that our residents are safe when they come in to do business with the city as well. And so in protecting the staff, as well as protecting our well-minding citizens, uh, we're making adjustments there at City Hall, uh, to ensure that everybody's safe when they come in to do business. And so we thank everybody for their support. Uh, again, thank the staff that were involved with that. We did a great discussion with them, and different concerns, uh, that they have. And we're trying to address those. You know, Jeremy's been having a call with that, uh, to address that, what the staff needs, especially up there with utilities. With that, that's all I have.
Mr. Rattler, you have the August...
Also, Cassie Alderman, Davidson came to the board, her club for that day. It's very noted that he was there representing all you that could be there that day.
I appreciate that, Alvin. Um, the August twenty-twenty municipal court order, the packet. Any questions from the media? No. How are you doing? You're at work. We're glad to see you. Um, before we move to adjourn, I just want to point out to the board and to the audience, we've talked a lot about, um, the new process for public anticipation. We've talked a lot about that agenda request form. And I think tonight was a perfect example of how well it works. You know, the gentleman came with, um, issues concerning water issues and water bills. And because we went through this new process of notifying staff what the concern is, it allowed, um, Jeremy and Carl and other members of the staff to do a lot of thorough investigation, and they're bringing that report to us and to the citizens. So I just, um, I encourage you to encourage your constituents to make use of that form. I think it's a great transparent way for us to, to give feedback to residents right away when we approach the board. So with that, Alvin Milner.
I'd like to make a motion for your executive session, for someone who has been on the zero twenty-one, zero two, receipt for purchase for salary.
Thank you. Give a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Certainly.
And I have a second from Alderman, who was on this side of the report, I should. Dora, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alvin Zary.
Aye.
Alvin Reese.
Aye.
Alvin Davidson.
Aye.
Alvin Dora.
Aye.
Alvin Turner.
Aye.
Alvin Dora.
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Thank you, we're adjourned. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.